...by Mr. Moore.
O merciful Father, we ask that you look down on the city of Bastrop this evening. Want you to look at our council, look at our mayor, God our decisions for the betterment of the city of Bastrop. These and many other blessings we ask in Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, please.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman. It's always a pleasure to have guests in attendance with us tonight. Ms. Goldman, roll call.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Law.
Here.
Mayor, it's Board of One, Mr. Mason, his accent.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goldman. I'm going to ask that we stand and exercise a moment of silence for Eunice Crider, the mother of Thomas Crider, one of our firefighters, and Mr. Moselle Smith Senior who retired from the city of Bastrop. Thank you. Item number three, announcements. I wish to remind you that we, as the city administration, are continuing to look out for the well-being of our constituents. We still have an obligation to search for additional revenue streams in that we did lose 1.3 million dollars, the cumulative effect with the departure of International Paper Company and the closing of businesses. That obligation and that burden is still on us in this administration, and I trust that we all share the same concern that it's hard to plug a million-dollar hole. But we are continuing to look for additional revenue streams. We have to be mindful that we have aging equipment, police cars that need to be replaced, fire department needs equipment, and it is our inherent obligation to make sure that we supply our employees with the tools that they need to execute the duties of their job. The flag is flying at half-staff in memory of Chuck and John Smith. I believe that was the tenth chief, and we certainly want to be mindful of the officers that gave the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. But also, we lost two Navy SEALs from the state of Louisiana over in Afghanistan, so we are going to commensurate with the governor's office in flying the flags at half-staff, I believe, until, is it noon Sunday, chief? Noon Sunday. So let us be mindful of our local law enforcement as well as the people who police the world for us. Our airport layout plan met with one of the engineers in our 20-year plan, and I see, Brent, you're here, would you come and just do a briefing of that meeting? We are looking at our future, and we have a plan where we're looking at 20 years from now, and the most interesting thing about city administration is you have to address the immediate needs of your citizens, but at the same time, you have to forecast and plan for the future. And it is on the shoulders of those who have preceded me in this profession that I stand and exercise obligations to look out for you. Mr. Elton, if you'll share with us that briefing, that meeting?
Okay, well, basically, what they were sharing with us in that meeting was where we stand on that project so far, and for the most part, they've done a lot of the survey work and just the initial process of inventorying what we have and forecasting our needs in the future, and also forecasting what kind of demands will be placed on our airport in the future, as well as what demands are placed on it right now. And I'm guessing probably within the next month or two, they'll probably have a more finalized version that they'll be bringing up to share with us. But we are looking at some moderate growth over the next few years, nothing too extreme or exorbitant, but we do see some areas that we'll need to look at at the airport to expand our ability to meet those needs, and they're going to help us target those areas, and we'll look to meet those needs as they come in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Elton.
Yes, ma'am.
It is so important when we look at our airport and look at the amenities out at the current industrial site, and there's rail services running out there, and we have to consider opportunities for the future and what kind of upgrades that we can make or how we can augment on what we already have. So the airport plan is in the works, and we will be sharing that plan with you formally as it unfolds, but in the meantime, if you'd like to just leaf through this and pass it back to me, it's my only copy. The EDA grant opportunity, Mr. Armstrong, I believe you brought it up last month. We are still assessing and looking at all of our alternatives, plan to have a conference meeting in the very near future as we come to a conclusion on what we need to do. But the EDA project is still very much alive, and we are working on that. The DG Food Ribbon Cutting was today, the governor was here, and we're just very pleased at having a new facility in operation. Sometimes I think I get in my car and drive over there and just look to make sure it's real, but it's certainly a breath of fresh air, and also it gives you hope. This building had been dormant for many, many years, and aren't we blessed that we didn't tear it down or the company didn't tear it down?
Yeah.
Because this certainly gave a running start to get a business up and going. As I appreciate the information that was provided by Mr. McKenzie today, he has about 200 employees, they're looking to hire 100 or so more, and in the future, they are positioned for growth. So that is very good for our community. Also, you would be surprised at the level of interest that follows the location of a business. Thus far, we have three developers who are interested in building homes, affordable homes or apartments in this area, so we are also entertaining that, and we'll be bringing more information to you as it unfolds. Spoke with USDA Director Clarence Hawkins. In fact, I received a letter from him. If you will recall, last month, I think it was last month, I mentioned to you that I had sent some communication to him in respect of the sewer treatment plant on Martin Luther King South, and I received a letter back from him indicating that because of our city size, that we are below the 10,000 in population, there are certain things that are unavailable to us, to put it in a positive way, but he did make some suggestions of other alternatives that we could look at. But in that conversation, he asked if the city of Bastrop would host a rural caucus meeting, and that meeting will be at the Bastrop Municipal Center on August the 23rd in different agencies, and of course, the USDA is heading that meeting up, but the city of Bastrop will be hosting that event to look at needs that are generic to our population size and also to address the fact that the USDA is limited in some respects of addressing communities that exceed that 10,000 threshold of population. At this time, I'm going to get a briefing from department heads from their own point of view. We have had to make some adjustments in our budget, and we are trying to carry out what we are responsible to you as citizens, to the best of our ability to fill those holes. We cut some programs, but we expect that we are going to be able to still sustain the needs that are present. In the fire department, Chief Montgomery, we closed fire prevention, but we have been talking, and we talked throughout the whole time, we had to plan and anticipate for this cut or this move, how we could address the fire prevention issue, and Chief Montgomery, I'm going to ask you to give an update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief as possible. I'd like to inform the public that we have continued our smoke alarm and fire alarm program, which in essence mean that we have free smoke detectors for anybody in the community that feel like they need one, and not only do we offer the smoke detector free, but we will come out and install it for you. Also, we continue to serve on the newly formed Northeast Louisiana Rescue Squad, which is a squad that is prepared to go into action in the case of any event, whether it's here locally, whether it's nationally, or anywhere, it's headquartered out of Monroe. And speaking on, to piggyback off what the mayor was saying about trying to find different sources of revenue, recently, we applied for around $25,000 to get a grant for the district chiefs to get a new vehicle. And we received the grant, and we got the vehicle this week, and we look forward to putting it on the street in the next couple of days. So that was a bit of positive news that, you know, that because we were in need of the vehicle and, you know, with the situation being like it is as far as the funding, it was a blessing to be able to get that vehicle. Also, we are in the process of using firefighter assistance grant. We are preparing that to be able to get, hire new firefighters, and also get equipment that we need. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Do you have any questions for the chief? Okay. Thank you so much, Chief Montgomery.
You're welcome.
As you can, were you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much for that report. As you can see, it takes money to get money, to apply for grants, we have to have a match, and if our budget is continuing to dwindle, that also diminishes what we are able to apply for if we don't have the money to match grants that come down the pipes. The police department met with the chief, and we've talked through how we can address truancy and drug resistance and the education of our young children. I'm pleased to say that the city of Bastrop has partnered with the school system. I see two of the board members here from the school system, Mr. Smith, Mr. Fitzroy, would you stand up? Thank you for joining us this evening. At every opportunity that's available to the city and where it is reasonably possible, because I'm certainly not going to overstep my bounds and take over somebody else's territory, I recognize that the school system has obligation to educate our children, but where we can coordinate together, we do so. They worked with the city of Bastrop on the redevelopment plan and addressed, helped us to come up with the seven goals, and also working with Ralph Davenport, child welfare and attendance. He has noted that there has been a decrease in truancy, and recently, we eliminated the dare position, but we have not eliminated our obligation to still coordinate with public agencies as we see fit and see the opportunity. Chief Black, if you'll speak to that as we have met on that particular issue.
Reference to truancy, we don't have a truancy officer as such. However, the truancy rate Mr. Davenport indicated has dropped, and we want to contribute to keeping it, continuing that trend of dropping, and therefore, we'll have the officers doing their daily routines, look out for possible truance. I mean, school's about to start, and officers are already on the street, so they come in contact with these children, they can inquire whether or not they should be in school, determining their age and what have you. We can assist what truancy officers are available, we can also assist the schools in that way. Instead of having one officer do it, we might have half a dozen officers doing it, or the whole department, you know, half a dozen at a time, working ship. Also, as far as the drug education, we are willing and able to provide speakers to schools, church groups, civic organizations, anybody that's interested to help educate the kids, to educate in the dangers of using these, abusing illegal and even abusing legal drugs. And we are going to continue to do that, and we're going to make that commitment to the school and the kids.
Okay, you have any questions for the chief?
Chief Black. If we would have the need for someone to speak on those issues, who would we have to contact?
Just contact my office.
Your office?
Yeah, and we probably have, I can think of a number of people that would be able to address schools, you know, people in the department with experience that can deliver a pretty good talk.
Thank you.
Okay, we have looked at the opportunities that are before us to address that, and in talking with the chief today, we talked about the opportunity of parent-teacher conference and getting information out that every child can take something home, and also have speakers, as Chief Black indicated. But I do want the public to know that we are not letting up on our obligation to police this city. I recognize that crime rate increased for whatever reasons, I don't know whether it was induced by the economy or induced by other factors, but we are not letting up on our opportunity to keep this community safe. That is one reason we redirected our energy to concentrate on the needs of the citizens. Thank you for that report, Chief Black. Mr. McKee, Public Works, we have maximized what we have with Public Works, and it has been extremely hot. We've had to change our schedule around to accommodate because we don't want anybody to get sick in the extreme heat. We have a limited number of employees, expected to do a major job, and Mr. McKee, I'm going to ask you to give an update on Public Works and Public Resources.
Okay, Mayor, Council, public. We finished up Dixie Ball, both softball and baseball, and presently, we are getting ready to go into our youth football program. We'll take this opportunity to make a little small announcement. We intend to deliver flyers with regard to the dates of sign-ups to the schools on August 24th, and we intend to have sign-ups from August 29, 2011, to September 2. The program, we also have a board this year. This will be the first time that PB Football will actually have a governing board that will help regulate the football program. We, of course, are always busy, this is our time of year, we're cutting grass in the parks, cemeteries, right-ofways. We've, of course, and the citizens already know this, we've been a little bit lucky this year because we haven't gotten a lot of rain, so we don't, grass isn't growing quite as fast. We're also, some of the same people that we have cutting grass in the ditches and the right-ofways are also the people that we use to fix the bridges and the potholes in the road. We just finished repairing the bridge at White and Cleveland Street, and we have one more that we're going to do some amount of work on. But when we pull those individuals, we can't cut ditches. We don't have enough personnel. So what we're asking the public to do is be patient with us. We're working our way across the city, and eventually, we will get every right-ofway cut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. I take pleasure in having the opportunity to provide as much information to the public as possible, and trust that you share with us our same concern and compassion as we work with our limited resources. Ms. Carroll, I'm looking at you in the audience, and I can still hear, but you said tighten your belts, and we have tightened our belts so much, but there's only so much tightening you can do when you don't have another hole to put the little thing through to keep your belt up, so bear with us. Also, I know that another, and this is the last of my announcements, and we'll get back to business as usual for the city. Blighted property, I recognize that that is a major concern, and it is our concern as well. The council members, I know if they could obliterate every abandoned house in their districts, they would do so, but here again, money is the issue, and we are unable to just go in, we have laws that we have to operate by. Unfortunately, we cannot regulate somebody else's value, and once we declare property that's abandoned or needs to be condemned, then we inherit that obligation to do something about it, which creates another liability on the city, which again, comes back to money and costing the city. But I spoke with Larry Walters, and we are going to have a meeting and put our heads together along with Dean Blackett and some others and department heads, and look at some alternatives in how we can address the blighted property in this community without passing that liability on to the city. So we are working towards achieving that goal also. That concludes my announcement. Are there any other announcements from the council members? All right, thank you so much for listening. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the public, okay, if you'll come and state your name and your point of reference to which item on the agenda that you are addressing?
Good evening, Randy Beaver, 2029 Saturn Street, Bastrop. And I was, the point of reference is item number eight, the ordinance authorizing borrowing of 1.5 million dollars for revenue anticipation note. And a question I had with this money that's gaining momentum to coming to us, just I was concerned on how much of that would be used in expropriation measures toward the takeover of the water plant? And just concern that I had from there.
Thank you for that question. The city has been doing the revenue anticipation note for a number of years, even when it was not in a process such as this one.
Yes.
So to answer your question, I think I can only answer it based on the past experiences. This is a trend because of the money that comes in after a date, and Mr. Nasaka, if you'll come and give some history on how and why we do this. But to say that we have budgeted X number of dollars out of the revenue anticipation note, I'm unable to say anything in specific to that, because this is just a trend, this is what the city has done for the past years. In fact, if my memory serves me correctly, Sandra, we did it the two terms I was on the city council.
Yes, ma'am. I'll wait here.
Okay.
I think you've adequately addressed the question. Certainly during the, as the matter comes up for approval, we can relate the history, et cetera, that.
Okay, thank you. Was that your only question, Mr. Beaver?
Yes, well, that matter, and what, it would be safe to say that hopefully, that money would be used to assist the fire departments, police departments, as I know that there's been budgetary restraints for that. I would hope that they would, there would be funds available for that. And the other question I had is, I know this has been an annual event, but this being an extraordinary matter with budgetary restraints, would it have been possible to seek this revenue anticipation note earlier in the year possibly than was done this year, just been an extraordinary measure? If that would have been an option?
This process has been in place, it proved itself to work in the past because of the number of months, and of course, we have an extraordinary situation because we are two years post International Paper Company, and we are now looking at the money that we are losing. So we, the city has to be positioned to look for additional revenue opportunities continuously. If you'll recall, the school system had to regroup, and they closed two schools, the sheriff department floated a tax. Well, you know, we are open to your suggestions. If you have a suggestion on how we can increase our revenue, then we'll welcome your ideas.
I'm just, I'm excited, I was at DG today also, and I was excited to see what I heard there, and I'm just excited to see the progress in our community, infrastructure growth, and I'm optimistic that city will be certainly viable and will be further growing in the future.
Well, thank you, Mr. Beaver. I never lose faith in our city, but we do have to be cognizant of the reality that's before us. Okay, you have a comment? Just state your name and your point of reference to the item on the agenda.
All right, Cindy Hendricks. Do you need my address again?
No, I have it.
Okay. The point of reference that I want to make is about the ban on the tobacco use in our city parks, and there's going to be two issues that I'm going to address on that. One, I have been a member of Keep More House Beautiful for several years, and keeping our parks clean has been one of the, a major issue. The tobacco products have added a lot of cigarette butts around the park, they are very hard to keep clean, it's very time-consuming to pick them up. You were talking earlier about saving some money for the city, you think about the hours that's spent trying to keep it clean. This is one of the ways that we could prevent some of the litter that is caused by cigarette butts in our park that could actually save you a little extra money. Not only will it do that, it's also important for our children, it's important for the families, and it leaves an impression for those who visit our parks. Dr. Trejo was here a little earlier, and he spoke on just the hazards of smoking, and I'll just briefly kind of read what he had in a letter and talk about that. Smoking is an addiction that not only affects the health of the person smoking, but also for those that are around them. According to the American Lung Association, every year in the United States, over 392,000 people die from tobacco-caused disease, making it the leading cause of a preventable death. Another 50,000 people die from exposure to secondhand smoke. Tragically, each day, thousands of kids still pick up a cigarette for the first time. The cycle of addiction, illness, and death continues, and this is one way that we may can help in stopping the addiction. I strongly support the ban on smoking in our public parks. We need to do what we can to protect our young people from secondhand smoke and try to prevent our young people from wanting to begin smoking. He also is a coach there, and I know that there are people who do smoke that are respectful of others who do not, they seem to want to stand off, but like he says, even in some cases, the wind still blows. My feeling is you've got, it's seven years it takes for a cigarette butt to deteriorate. I picked him up off the street, and I have picked him up in the park. I hope that y'all will really consider, Mayor and the city council, to ban this. It can, like I said, it's a first impression, and our children are going to be our future leaders, and let's leave an impression for our city to ban the use of tobacco smoking. There are four others that I can name, there's Stirlington, there's Ostralin, there's Southwest Louisiana, and there's Swartz who have already done this. Let us follow their lead and ban tobacco smoke in our parks.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments?
As Clarence Hawkins would have said, Ms. Carroll is here to make y'all.
Okay, I agree with Cindy.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, okay, Rita Carroll, 410 Garfield, I do live inside the city limits, and I do own a business here in Bastrop, and I do pay taxes. I do pay y'all salaries. I pay a lot of things that I don't want to pay, but I feel as though I'm being discriminated against because I do smoke. But I feel as though I'm being discriminated against because I do smoke. I know it's a horrible habit. I realize it kills people, but it's my choice to smoke. And I would request that, and I do have a child that plays at Carter Park. I like to go watch my child play. I sit far away from people in order that they don't get my cigarette smoke. I'm all the way at the very back of the ball field, because she does play in the back part. But anyway, I need, I want a non-smoking area. And if I don't get a non-smoking area, you know, where I can go to smoke, I want to know how this pertains to the municipal center when y'all rent it out. You have, you rent it, and then people smoke over there, and they drink over there. I, for one, voted against alcohol in restaurants. I don't want to be in restaurants where they got any kind of thing like that going on. But to get back to the point, I don't want to have to not go and watch my kid play ball because I cannot smoke. And I have, I will, honest to God, I don't put my cigarette butts on the ground. I knock the fire off of them and stick them in my pocket till I get to the trash can, which by the way, trash cans are missing at Carter Park, in case y'all hadn't been over there to see. There are none. Maybe three or four. I don't know where they went, but they're gone. There's no place in the other part of the park where you can throw your trash in a can because you can't find one. But we do need to come to terms with this as far as smoking and non-smoking. I don't care if I have a bleacher to sit on, I'll carry a chair. But I want a place where I can smoke and watch my child play ball. And I also want to know, on this other issue, number eight down here, on the ordinance, what part of that money, of the money that's been collected for that, like over the last year? Which, now, correct me if I'm wrong. You're wanting to get this money, right? Okay. We got it last year, right? What part of that money paid the $35,000 to take the water company? If any? Was any of that money used to hire the loggers and these specialists and all this kind of
The money that's borrowed, does that, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The money that's borrowed is to sustain, put in our general operating budget. And again, to say that this money was specifically borrowed for that particular purpose would not be a fair statement for me to make from this position. So this money is just for our general operating expenses?
Okay. And your general operating expenses was what paid that man back there? I can't pronounce your name, sir. And the other people, the advisors?
Okay. Ms. Carroll, thank you. The gentleman back there, Mr. Steve Nasaka, has been with us for a number of years in the capacity as financial advisor, and he works with us on multiple projects.
Right.
And as of date, Mr. Nasaka has not charged us anything in reference to acquisition of utilities. But trust me, this city has an obligation to continue to look for revenue
Right.
... opportunities. And that's an effort that will not cease, and I don't think it will cease with this administration. It's an ongoing effort. When you see a decline in your budget, I think it would be remiss of any mayor to fail to look for an opportunity to sustain a city. So the $35,000, is that inaccurate?
Ma'am, I wouldn't want to say.
Okay. I know that's what was in the newspaper, but we have been very guarded in our expenditures. But as I said earlier, and I have to keep this in front of the public, it's hard to plug a $1,000,000 hole. And when you look at what you have to do to sustain a city, and we have taken your suggestion, I think you were here a couple of months ago, and it was your phrase, tighten your belts. And we have done that. Public Works lost 15 people. The police department, we don't want to compromise public safety in the police or fire department.
Right.
But we streamlined as much as we possibly could, because we have that obligation. When you consider that increasing costs, police and fire, we saw a PowerPoint presentation on that. The increasing cost, we went from over, slightly over $400,000 to close to $1 million. $840,000, I think, to be exact, in municipal retirement. So the cost to operate in a city is not decreasing. So when you take roughly $35,000, and you put it against a $1 million loss, then you just have to weigh it out?
But the $35,000 was almost another policeman's salary, is what I'm saying, you know?
Well...
At least a part-time.
When you say another policeman's salary...
Or another fireman.
Excuse me. When you say that, you have to think about sustaining a salary over a period of time. If your budget is declining, and you put a retirement cost, the salary, possible overtime, it could very well exceed $35,000. And you want to be able to have that police officer for 20 years and not just for one year. So it's a balancing act for this administration, but we are doing the best we can under circumstances. Thank you for your points.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Ricky Anderson, 514 Kamel Street. Mr. Howard Locke is my city council representative. I'd like to talk about item number eight, if I may.
Okay.
As pertaining to this $1 million that I have that we're hoping to get within that $1 million that I have, hoping to get, can we make sure that our parks are kept up to date? That's something the cities, the citizens, the community are looking forward to go to during hard times, depressed times, comfort times. Dawson Park for one instant. You can't go there without all kinds of problems. And Dawson Park has a problem. Now, for us, the trash can, they're all at Dawson, but they're not being used. The city pool is full of nothing but trash and trash cans. I would like to see some of this money allocated to our recreation, and that would probably eliminate some of this truance that is going around in this community. I say this, mayor and council. I hope that each and every one of you will get out and go into your district and see what's going on. Because it's not just trash, it's the people who are throwing the trash, it's the criminals who are out there doing the criminal activities. And we see a lot of this, especially in Dawson Park. Now, the supervisor in that particular gym, I have highly respect for, but there needs to be some supervision within those parks. Now, talking about picking up cigarette butts, come to Dawson, you're going to pick up more than cigarette butts. Now, that's the true fact, and I want to thank you for allowing me to approach you with this, ma'am. Another notice to Mr. McKee, if he's here, there's three ducklings, now it's two, that's been there for the last two months, just swimming in Dawson.
Okay. Okay. You referenced item number eight, so let's not take this as an opportunity to go beyond that point.
Well, I just hope we use half of this $1 million to get them ducklings somewhere safe. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Let's move on to, oh, I'm sorry. We'll take, come on. State your name and your point of reference on the item of the agenda. Please keep your points contained to the point that you're going to reference in...
Roy Carroll, 410 Garfield, Bastrop, Louisiana. About the smoking thing, I wish they would at least consider having a designated area with receptacles, but I agree with that it shouldn't be done, you know, around the bleachers and places like that. And I wanted to know if the parks are rented out, if people would be able to smoke during those rentals. And also, I want to say something on behalf of you, mayor, and the city council, that a lot of people come into our place of business, they complain about this, that, and the other, but they're not here tonight.
I agree.
And I commend y'all for the job you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. That's encouraging in these tough economic times. We're going to move on to number five. We're moving kind of slow tonight. Item number five. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes of July 14, 2011, a regular meeting.
I'll make that motion, mayor. For a second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Finance Committee Report Resolution 111393, Bills and Claims for the Month of July 2011. Mr. Locke?
May I move that we receive and adopt Resolution 111393, Bills and Claims for the Month of July?
Properly moved?
For a second.
And duly second. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Resolution 111394, Resolution Commending Annie Ruth Miller Upon Retirement From the Public Works Department. Is Ms. Miller here?
No, she's not able to come.
You have a resolution? At this time, I will entertain a motion to Resolution 111394.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I also have a certificate of appreciation for Ms. Annie Ruth Miller from the City of Bastrop. This certificate is presented to Annie Ruth Miller in sincere appreciation. We thank you for 13 years of professional service, devotion, and support to the City of Bastrop Animal Shelter. Congratulations on your retirement. Mr. McKee, if you would, would you make this presentation to? Did we do the motion and care and second and everything, vote at home?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item number eight, Ordinance 1114201, An Ordinance Authorizing the Borrowing by the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, of $1,500,000 by issuance of its Revenue Anticipation Note, Series 2011, Providing for the Payment Thereof Providing With Respect to the Rate of Interest Thereon Providing for a Pledge and Dedication of Taxes and Other Revenues of Said City for Security and Payment Thereof in Principle and Interest and Other Matters in Connection There With Mr. Steve Nasaka. And Mr. Nasaka, when you're there, would you address those points of interest or inquiries that we had in terms of the tradition of why we do this?
Ma'am, I will do my best to accomplish that. Good evening. It is good to be with you again for this Revenue Anticipation Note. If we can briefly capsule what its concept and derivation and rationale is, is this. It is not a new source of funding for whatever project you might have in mind. It is simply this. You, like half of the cities and towns in the state, almost all of the sheriffs, and law enforcement districts in the state, and a third, half of the school boards in the state, get a significant portion of your revenues every year with property taxes. And as everyone knows, every homeowner knows, in the audience and in the public, those taxes are due in December, get paid in December, January. So as a result, you get roughly 40% of your, you get, over half, actually, of the direct revenue you get from city residents, you get via property taxes, and you get that in about a six-week period. So this Revenue Anticipation Note is a tool that you issue these, receive these funds, pay them off in the same year, and allows you to budget, to normally budget and pay your bills on time. That's what it's all about. Nothing more complicated than that, and nothing broader or more available to you. It's the same budget you adopted a month ago. You know, you do it, we're doing, to do it earlier in the year, this is early in the year. You know, we just, five weeks ago, began our new year. So this is a, and as a result of, you guys know, because you've watched this yourselves in managing this budget, you've seen that September, October, November, December are really lean with regard to cash flow for the city. And as a result, this tool allows you to continue to make payroll, you know, continue to pay your city's operating expenses through those months. And as a result, it normalizes our cash flow and our ability to pay the city's current obligations during the time, fall to winter time. So nothing more complicated than that, and it's a, so not a new revenue source, strictly a cash flow method, like I told you, for most of the sheriffs in the state get the majority of their revenues via property taxes, and a majority of those sheriffs use that same tool in order to make sure they can pay, you know, pay their police force and their administration during the later parts of the year as well. So, and in support of that, we continually, as we've done for the last multiple years, we solicit all of the banks that operate in the area. We received two bids this year, and they were from Regions Bank and Washington Independent Bank. And Regions bid was 2.24% on an annual basis. We're not borrowing for an entire year, so our borrowing cost is less than that. OIB was 2.985%. Both of them are really attractive bids. Both of them are under what our borrowing rate was last year, you know, reflective of, certainly of the economy and the fact that interest rates are low, but it's really attractive at 2.24%. And in analyzing that, both myself and bond counsel Bill Bowles, we've both come to the conclusion and recommendation to you that the Regions bid was lower after we analyzed the total cost of financing. And as a result, we're recommending that the ordinance be adopted that allows us to finalize the borrowing through Regions Bank at 2.24%.
Thank you, Mr. Nasaka. Having heard that presentation, at this time, I will entertain a motion on Ordinance 114201.
May I make a motion?
Properly moved?
Aye. Second to that motion.
And second. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. I trust that this information that you received tonight offers some clarity in terms of why we have to operate like this. And I think that the title of what we're doing, RAN, Revenue Anticipation Note, best describes where we are, and this is not a new concept. Thank you, Mr. Nasaka. Appreciate your service to the City of Bastrop. Item number nine, Mr. Jesse Mean, Department of Environmental Quality. Welcome to the City of Bastrop. If you'll give us a little background information.
Ma'am, do y'all have this packet? I think we sent it out to you last week, and it was about the ordinance.
Item number nine.
Basically, what we're doing here locally, we go on a parish-by-parish basis, doing different things to help protect the water systems, the water wells, the aquifers that are out there. We're currently working in Morehouse Parish. In fact, we're having a public meeting coming on September 1st, and I think we set it up for, was it for this room or for... for, was it for this room or for the courthouse? This room? Okay. I wasn't sure about where we're doing it. But anyway, at the public meeting, we hope to get as many people from the parish involved as possible. We want to teach people about their water supplies, where it comes from, and what they can do to help protect it. And we hope to do some work here locally on a protection kind of thing. Not saying there's anything wrong with it, we just want to keep it, keep it clean. But one of the things that we do routinely, if we go, we go to the different municipalities that have water wells located within their jurisdiction and introduce this model ordinance. And basically, what it does is protects the water wells here in town from getting contaminated. And if you could, go through this packet with me. I want to go through it real quick. About 10 minutes, is that okay? Is that enough time?
Okay.
Too much time or something?
Okay.
Okay. If you look on page one, y'all see where it says, "For Good Reasons to Adopt a Drinking Water Protection Ordinance." Look under number one there. And I'm not going to read through the whole thing. It's kind of hit the high points, but it kind of helps me go through my presentation. But to kind of get started, basically, the federal government had DEQ go out and locate all the public water wells and all the public water intakes across the state. In fact, every state in the country had to do this. And basically, locate anything around them that could possibly contaminate them. We call these potential sources of contamination. It's things like gas stations, chemical plants, anything that uses chemicals. We've located all that information, and we use it now to help protect all these water sources. And one of the things that we found is that 15% of our population in Louisiana is served by water systems that are ranked as being highly potentially to be susceptible to being contaminated by something, based on the amount of things that we found near them. So, we're hoping by passing the ordinance like this, and I'm going to go through the ordinance toward the end of the presentation, a little bit more thoroughly, we hope we'll keep that number down. If you look at number two, basically, there are very few existing state regulations in Louisiana that do something like this. Really, the only thing that's out there as far as state regulation that specifically protects a public water well is the Department of Health and Hospitals. They have a set aside of 50 feet, I believe it is, for sewage, sewage plants, that kind of thing. But otherwise, if somebody has the land and the money and the capability, they could put anything they want to right next to your water wells. Now, we have a lot of regulations that deal with, say, if you have a sewer plant, you know, sewer plants treat the sewage that comes in, and they have to discharge it out somewhere. We have regulations on that at DEQ to make sure that that water coming out, that wastewater, is cleaned properly so it's not getting our rivers and waterways dirty. But we also have things that say, if something were to spill, this is what you have to do, and this is how we'll clean it up. But we're finding that people make mistakes, people spill stuff all the time, and if there's something next to your well and it spills and it gets into it, it's too late. And I think y'all may be aware of this, but, and I got it here in a second, but Bastrop has actually experienced this before with, I think it was gasoline, got into the water system at some point. And the water system, I guess, y'all had to treat it for a while, didn't you? So, it can happen, and it actually costs money. So, we're trying to keep things like that from happening by getting these ordinances like this passed. I have two examples right here, number three and number four. I'll just go through one of them. But y'all know, because y'all have experienced it here already. The town of Gilbert, a little further south of y'all, they had two old service stations, and I think it was two underground storage tanks that over years were leaking. They found gasoline in their water system at some point. And what they had to do is actually go out real quick and tell their public that they can't drink the water, that it's dangerous. I think they got the National Guard to bring some trucks in to provide water on a temporary basis. And then they actually tied it into another water system until they can actually drill their own water wells again, so they had to re-drill. And then they had to locate those wells way outside of town and pipe it back in. And you can see it cost them $424,000 to do that, to drill those new wells and connect to their existing water system. We're hoping, and our idea is with this protection and with ordinances like this, we'll keep that kind of thing from happening, so y'all won't incur that cost. And from just sitting here listening, it sounds like cost is a big thing right now with your city. And I'll kind of talk about that again in a second. But with this ordinance, we're finding that it doesn't cost anything to pass it. The only cost that you incur is, you know, how you have to advertise it in the paper before you can do an ordinance. I guess everybody has to do that. The cost of putting in the paper is the only thing. So far, everybody who's passed it, it kind of falls within their existing, I guess, regulation system, and it hasn't cost anybody anything. In fact, I talked to folks that passed it, and they've really had no problems with it so far. Let's flip past the next two pages. The next page says Gilbert on it. That's just a newspaper clipping about what I already talked about. But do you see that page that has the box on it that looks like this? That has a listing of the different public water systems in Louisiana that have been contaminated. And you can see it's more than just gasoline. It's different things. But if you look at Bastrop, it has BTEX. That's basically gasoline. And it came from a leaking above-ground storage tank. So, it happens, and we've seen it happen. And again, we're trying to keep this from happening. So, you know, it's protecting people's lives, basically, is what we're trying to do. The next page says Source Water Contamination Costs. Just look at a couple of those. $9.5 million plus $300,000 per year for 30 years. There's one of them, $540 million. It's, you can see all the costs out there. Cleaning up contaminated groundwater is really, really expensive, and it doesn't always work either. So, again, the idea is to keep this from happening here locally. Again. Okay, flip past that page. The next page looks like an email. Do y'all see that? It has Howard Fielding on the top of it. I want to bring this up to talk about state regulations. This email is about underground storage tanks. We have a lot of really tight, tight regulations on underground storage tanks. They have to be double-walled. You have to track how much is going into the tank and how much you're selling. I mean, and people are watching that all the time. Even so, with all those regulations, we're still finding people making mistakes. You know, anything that man builds is going to break at some point. This is the way it is. And you can see some of the releases. 80,000 gallons of diesel over one month. One of them is overnight. 8,000 gallons of gasoline released overnight. So, that's a lot of stuff that can happen. And again, our idea with this ordinance is to keep these kind of facilities away from your water wells. And I say your water wells. I understand that Peoples owns it at this time, and y'all may be kind of looking at something different. But you, as a council, I guess, control the jurisdiction where that well is located because it's within your municipality. So, this ordinance is something that y'all can actually do to protect those water wells still, even though you don't, I guess, technically own it. I'm going to flip past the next two pages because it gets a little bit wordy, but I just want to say, if y'all get a chance to look at where it says Source Water Collaborative, and there's another one that says EPA on it, Smart Growth, this one. Y'all get a chance to read through that. All those, I think it's four or five pages. Basically, there's a lot of documentation out there that's coming from a national level, the American Waterworks Association, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Source Water Collaborative, which is a lot of groups. I think the People's are a part of the Louisiana Rural Water Association. They're behind stuff like this. Basically, there's a national push right now to get local governments involved with protecting their own water supplies. And what everybody's looking at is, the best way of doing that is to, I guess, look at what's around your wells and do some planning ahead. It sounds like they're doing a lot of planning, trying to get businesses to move in right now. And now's a good time to do something like this because y'all are at that trying to get something going stage. So, that's the kind of thing to be thinking about. What do you want next to your wells? And basically, passing this would give you more control over what can and can't be put next to those wells. It's basically putting the power in your hands. But I want you to look at this page here. The top right of it says page two of five. And the very bottom of it, you'll see Louisiana Municipal Association Policy Statement. Ms. Mayor, y'all part of LMA?
Yes, we are.
The LMA got behind this ordinance a few years back, and they actually put it in their policy, and everybody voted on it. And they suggest that every municipality in Louisiana actually pass this thing. So, we have the backing of the LMA. So, it's not just at a national level, but here locally in the state as well. The next page, you'll see a listing of all the different places that have passed it. And you can see, basically, these are all places that we're doing our work for our drinking water protection program. And it's both municipal and parish governments. So, we do plan on going not just to y'all here locally, but also to Bonita, Oak Ridge, I think, has one, and the Police Jury. I think there's one other one, I'm forgetting, but. Maruge. Well, Maruge is actually, their wells are in the parish government jurisdiction. Their wells are outside of town. But anywhere here locally where there's a well and there's a jurisdiction like y'all that can do something to help protect them, we're going to do the same thing that I'm doing with y'all. So, if you pass it, what I'm trying to get at is you're not going to be by yourself. We're talking to everybody. Also, if you look at that list, I think it's getting about 70 different organizations that have passed it so far. And it tells you a couple of things. Every time we take it somewhere, there's always something that comes up, and we tweak our model to make it fit better for everybody. So, by the time it's getting to y'all, it's pretty tight. We got a pretty good model. And if y'all see anything that we think we can, you think that we can change in it, let us know because we want to make it better for the next person after y'all to look at. Also, when we developed this thing, we looked at different ordinances around the country and a model ordinance from the Environmental Protection Agency. And then we also had lawyers at DEQ. Actually, my father's a town attorney for like 35 years. He looked at it. And then all their lawyers from all these different municipalities and parishes, they looked at it. So, it's had a lot of legal people check it out. So, and we fix everything every time we get it. So, be assured in the fact that a lot of eyes have been on this thing already. So, I just wanted to bring that up to you. Okay, the next page, I want to flip past that. That's just a summary of what the ordinance says. But if you look, this is the ordinance itself. It says draft on it. That's the front of it. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm just going to, real quick, go through each section and just say what it says or what it does. If you look at the top, the very beginning, we say Model Ordinance. Being that it's a model, that means if there's something in it that you don't like, you don't have to, you can change it. Also, it's voluntary. We want this to fit what you need to do. I'm not coming up here from Baton Rouge saying you have to pass this ordinance. I'm just putting it on the table out there for you, and if you're interested in it, you can do it. And we'll be around to do as much as you need. Even if it's beyond this ordinance, if there's anything as far as DEQ-related stuff that you need help with, you can give me a call. And I've been there for a while, so I know a lot of people, so we can, I can try to help you out. But let's get into the ordinance real quick. Again, we always say, get your lawyer to look at it because there may be something in here that might mess you up or you might want to think about. Section one is the title and the purpose, and basically, it does just that. It says that it is the groundwater protection ordinance that basically establishes a critical area around every public water well, every active public water well here in town. So, basically, and I got you all a map, we're looking at the four wells that are in the middle of Bastrop. Those are the ones we're talking about. And you can see where it's located there. And basically, the underlying purpose of passing this thing is to protect your constituency, to make sure that people's lives are safe by having safe drinking water. Section two is applicability. Basically, the ordinance applies to only new construction. And also, it's distinct from anything else y'all may have. If you have any zoning regulations or anything like that, it's distinct from that. Section three is definitions, and there are like three pages of definitions. So, let's flip to page four. Y'all flip to page four, you'll see Section four. And you see there, it says Establishment and Deliniation of the Drinking Water Protection Critical Areas. What that does is establishes an area, a zone, if you will, of 1,000 feet around every public water well. And again, on that map, if you, when you get time, if you want to look at it, it's the circle around the triangles in the middle of town. Those are 1,000-foot radius around each water well. That's what we're looking at. So, what does it do within that 1,000-foot radius? Well, if you look at Section five, it says Prohibited Uses. That is a list of types of facilities that if you pass the ordinance, new ones that fall within those categories cannot be built within that 1,000-foot area. Now, there are a couple of things I want to say about that, especially being that y'all are in the situation with the paper mill closing. I want to bring up a couple of points, a few points. If you look at that, it seems like a lot of stuff, quite frankly. It is. There are a lot of facilities listed on there. It's a model ordinance. So, if there's something in there that you don't like, that you want to take out, you're totally free to do that. We've actually had people add stuff to it. So, we want to make this, if you want to pass it, we want to make you as comfortable with it as possible. And I will say that paper mill is listed in there. Now, the paper mill is existing already, so it's grandfathered in, so it's not going to mess them up. But there may be something you want to look at, maybe just removing it, just so it, I guess it's more palatable if another paper mill wants to come in. There's always ways of doing it. But there's a reason for every one of those things that are on that list. We did some research ahead of time when we're looking around all of Louisiana for the types of facilities that have contaminated public water wells in the past. And all these places have chemicals associated with them that could do something. Not saying that they are going to, and they definitely have or will do it, but there's always that possibility. Again, you know, we're men, we're humans, we all make mistakes. That's kind of the thinking behind it. But again, it's a model, so if there's something you want to change on that, it's totally within your right to do. Section six is Exceptions. That's where the grandfather clause is. So, basically, anybody who's on that list in Section five, if they're there right now and they're close to that well, if you're to pass this ordinance, they don't have to close down. They're able to stay in existence. So, basically, anybody that's there now can stay there. It's just new places. If you look under Section six, and toward the middle, there's a little A there, and you see it says Uses and Activities Requiring Special Permit, and it says 1, 2, 3. Basically, that's a mechanism that gives y'all kind of a little leeway power to look at what's coming into your town and seeing whether you want it to be there. Say a gas station's already grandfathered in, and they want to add another pump island, they can come to you and say, hey, is this okay? And if you say yes or no, it's totally up to y'all. So, that's in that. Number two talks about if a place is grandfathered, and they go out of business, and if they want to come back in, which I think the paper mill may fall within that category, they can come say, look, you have this ordinance, but can we come back? And you can say yes or no. So, it's totally within y'all's power to do with it as you see fit. Number three talks about those activities that involve a lot of chemicals, basically, is what it's saying. That's kind of a catch-all. Again, it gives you the power to say what can be put next to your wells. Flip past that page, and I'm almost finished, I promise. Number B at the top up there just talks about how to go about doing those special permits. We see Section seven, says Saving Clause. That's basically standard language in every ordinance that says if a part of it is found to be invalid, it doesn't negate the whole thing. Section eight is Compliance. It actually spells out how to go about making sure that the public maintains compliance with this ordinance. So, everything's written down for you. And again, it hasn't cost anybody anything to do that so far. The next page, you see Section nine. This is the last page, is Enforcement. It actually has teeth to it, which we like because, quite frankly, in Louisiana and a lot of other places, there's nothing as far as real viable consequences if somebody messes up a water well. You got to clean it up. Sometimes you got to pay for it. But a lot of times, when water systems incur something like that, we all, as taxpayers and as water users, have to pay for it. But this actually puts some teeth to it. You can actually do civil enforcement through a civil, you know, a court case or criminal enforcement. Do y'all follow under the Larson Act? Do you have to fall within that?
No.
You don't? Okay. The Larson Act has some stipulation as far as how much money and how much jail time. So, but anyway, that's left open, so y'all can determine that however you need to. And that's pretty much the ordinance. We like it. We think it's a good idea, and that's why we're promoting it everywhere. And pretty much as we get to places, pretty much people are passing it. Again, all it's going to do is be there to serve your constituents long after we're all gone and still there protecting our people and their water. And I understand you're in a situation with trying to get more revenue in, so you kind of have to, it's a balancing thing. You have to look at it. And, but the thing to think about, there's nothing out there right now, and your water system has gotten contaminated in the past. And if you don't have clean water, you're not going to have a town. I mean, that's the bottom line. So, you need both. You need to have businesses coming in, but you also need clean water. So, it's just something to think about. And it's a model, so you can change it however you want. But if y'all ever need any help, give me a call. I'll leave my, I'll get in touch with you. You have my email. And if you have any questions, I can entertain those as well.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do you have this in electronic form?
I sure do, and we can get it to you.
I think you sent it to me.
Did I send it to you? Okay. I'll double-check. Maybe I'll just send it to you again, just to be sure. But it's in Word format.
Mr. Lawrence is our city attorney, and he will look over, you know, any document that we, or agreement that we enter into. Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate your.
Yes, ma'am.
Staff members working with us, and look forward to seeing you in September.
September 1st.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll send you an invitation.
All right.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Neens?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Armstrong.
Based on ownership?
Ownership? Yes.
So it's the city owning the water company?
Yes, sir. No, no, it's not, no. Any public water system, any public water well that's active falls within this ordinance. It doesn't matter who owns it. Say if Marouche had a water well in Bastrop, if you pass this ordinance, you're protecting their water well as well. So since people's own it, but you still have the jurisdiction of the land on where the well is located. So it doesn't matter who owns the wells. Just so happens, y'all only have peoples in town, so you'd just be protecting. But still, it's the water. When you turn the faucet on at home, that's your water. So that's what you'd be protecting. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Okay. Moving right along to item number ten, resolution 111395, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Denman Engineering for taxiway lighting rehabilitation for the airport. Mr. Bren Elton.
I really wasn't sure if you'd even need me to speak on this. But what this is basically is just an agreement to where we're agreeing to use Denman Engineering for their services in that particular project. And that is actually the next project that we have listed on our capital improvement plan. And that project will, I think in this upcoming year, we'll do the engineering portion of it, and then the following year, we'll actually do the construction phase. And I think Denman's a great choice for this particular project. We already have the LPA group, who is our other consultant, working our layout plan. So this just kind of falls right in line with Denman picking up this project.
Okay.
So this under the grant that we had?
Yes, we'll actually apply for a grant for this one. We'll do one grant one year for the engineering, then another grant the following year for the construction phase. And spacing it out like that is going to allow us to build up our non-primary entitlement to allow that to pay for those projects.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Elton? At this time, I will entertain a motion on resolution 111395.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved. And second, are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Elton. Item number eleven, resolution 111396, a resolution of support for a grant through the local governmental assistance, ALGAP, to fund the purchase of playground equipment for the City of Bastrop's parks. Mr. Willie McKee.
We would like to get permission to apply for this grant for the council. Give you permission for us to apply for this grant to upgrade the playground equipment in some of our parks. The, we make, take, for example, the merry-go-rounds. We just finished repairing one in Dotson, and because they're old, parks are getting harder and harder to obtain. So we'd like to upgrade our playground equipment.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. McKee.
Question.
Okay, Mr. Locke, you have a question for Mr. McKee?
Ms. McKee, if the grant application is approved, do you have a priority of which park's going to get what?
Yes, sir. The, I, the show that is that question, yes, sir. For example, the merry-go-rounds, I call them, get more use in every park. And I think we'll have enough money to replace those in each one of the parks, replace each one of those. But our two main parks that we get the most use out of are Dotson and Carter.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Locke?
That was an example.
No, sir, that was the truth.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Ms. McKee.
Okay. We, Ms. Goldman and I talked about this grant. We look for ways to use this money that the general public will benefit from it, and there are certain stipulations that come with it. So improving the equipment on the playgrounds was one of the alternatives that came as a result of that discussion, the aging playground equipment. And as Mr. McKee said, it gets hard to find a park for merry-go-rounds, and you have to think of it in a commercial respect, which you put on a playground for the general public has to meet a certain criteria. So the cost of it can be far more expensive than just picking up a catalog and ordering something. So at this time, if you have no further questions, I will entertain a motion on resolution 111396.
So, Ms. Mayor, I move that we accept the resolution 111396.
Okay, thank you. Properly moved.
Second.
And second, are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number twelve, ordinance 114202, to prohibit the use of tobacco products in the public parks of the City of Bastrop by amending the appropriate sections of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Bastrop and repeal all other sections of the Code of Ordinances that are inconsistent with said prohibition and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Mr. Lawrence, you want to speak to this? And Mr. McKee, as Public Works Resource Director, I'll ask you to come also.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been listening to the comments made earlier regarding this ordinance. The city has an absolute right to regulate activities of this type in its parks and public facilities. I think as you look at this, the hard part of it is to weigh both sides. There's a long history, long tradition of people smoking and using tobacco products in our society. That's one side of it, and I know Mrs. Carroll spoke to that issue. Then there's the other side of it, and that is there is no constitutional right to smoke in or on public facilities. And there is no statutory right, there is no legal right to, upon which one could, can point to and say, I have a right to go to that publicly-owned area or facility and smoke. Therefore, it's really totally your prerogative at this point to decide what direction that you wish to go, whether you want to do nothing and allow people to smoke in parks, or whether you wish to absolutely ban it, which is what this ordinance speaks to, or whether or not you want other time and place and manner restrictions placed on that activity in public parks. So the ordinance that's on the table now is to completely outlaw it with no exceptions. And those are your choices. And I'd be glad to answer any questions or concerns or comments that you might have.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I think we had some discussion on this, it was last month, and we were in the layover mode. Council members, you have had an opportunity to hear from your constituents and have some dialogue. Mr. McKee, you're standing at the podium. Any special points you think need to be recognized? You have heard two points of view on this issue, one from one who wishes to ban and one who wants consideration in terms of it. So, Mr. McKee, at this time, any special things that you think this council needs to take under consideration?
No, Mayor, I just add that since last council meeting, we've, Public Works has gotten calls, I'd say probably an equal amount, both pro and con on this. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council might have with regard to anything regarding how we implement this in a park.
Mr. McKee, I have one question. Would it be feasible to, for the designated area, let's say, for our left field, or right field, or center field, or just?
Yes, sir.
Outside the perimeter of the park?
Outside the perimeter of the park?
You know, it's sort of like the fence here, then, you know, next couple, you go inside the gate, and people stand outside, but yet you could be on, you know, smoking a cigarette outside the fence.
Well, Mr. Lawrence, let me see if I can answer that in a two-part question, if you don't mind. If you picture Carter Park, and you picture what I call the youth field, the first, right behind the Lucky Village, I could theoretically stand outside the fence and smoke a cigarette and be out of the park, right? And be closer to the bleachers than I would be if I was in the center field. I guess the example I would give is we had a tournament around the Fourth of July, and we moved a set of bleachers to the outfield, and we designate that as a smoking area. To my knowledge, we didn't have any problems. Now, that doesn't comply with the ordinance that's on the table now. But I can accommodate the council any way they wish to vote.
Mr. McKee, I believe one point of discussion, the RV park, and have we discussed that openly? The people that, okay, would you speak to that in particular aspect?
Yes, ma'am. The RV park is located inside of Carter Park. The question was posed, and of course, I couldn't answer it. The person was, question was posed to me, if I rent an RV space and I'm inside the park, can I smoke in that space?
As worded, no. But in terms of, as it is worded, you could not, certainly, you could word the ordinance to say less than except for the RV park. This is one of those things where you can do anything you want to do in terms of saying where people can or cannot. And so you could carve that out.
Do you have any other questions? I thought it was important to look at every issue as you prepare to make a decision on something of this nature, having had the opportunity, as I indicated earlier, to speak to constituents and hear the points that our attorney has brought out along with our Public Works Director. Do you have any other questions or any other discussions you need to talk about?
In terms of enforcement, if we pass this ordinance, no smoking allowed, you know, how are we going to be able to enforce it, force manpower?
I think the police chief would have to answer that one.
Okay. If you don't leave, Mr. McKee, I don't think this is over. If you just step aside and just, we'll get Chief Black to come up and speak to this issue in reference. We look at police power and prioritizing where you dispatch an officer to.
Right.
Right. I mean, you know, if someone is blatantly smoking against the ordinance in the park and officer's there, he can take action. And that will probably consist of a summons or citation of some type. The only thing I'd probably check with Mr. Lawrence or Mr. Bentley about if someone files a complaint against someone smoking in the park, how would we would handle that, you know, procedurally? You know, I mean, you go get a warrant for their arrest or something like that, but that's something I'd have to work out with the city attorneys.
Are there any other questions?
Remember, the general catch-all provisions of the city charter talks about penalties of from zero to six months in jail and from zero to $500 fine. Now, in practical terms, I don't see the upper limits on those things being the punishment if something were to happen. But as things stand right now, that's the limits of the jurisdiction placed on the city court in terms of the punishment. One other thing I would say very quickly, one of the citizens, I forgot who it was, mentioned something about, well, what about consuming alcohol at the community, at the center or smoking there? You know, the fact is, since this is not a constitutionally protected right, the city has the right to vary how it treats different locales. It can say, you can smoke there, you can't smoke there. You can do absolutely whatever you want to because it's not a constitutional right. So just wanted to address that point.
Okay. All right. Mr. McKee, if you'll come back, I'd believe that probably from Chief Black, from a policing standpoint, I can't see any other question that would come because the penalty phase of it is just, what do you do? How do you?
Right, it's left to the judge. It's subject to the parameters mentioned.
Okay. I think, and council members, you're certainly welcome to bring out your questions at this time. Another point, in that this bans in all of, should you desire to vote on this ordinance as presented to you tonight, what would be the geographical location that a person could smoke in proximity of the park, Mr. McKee?
They would have to go, at the very least, outside the fence to the parking lot. Now, depending on where they're standing, they, in some cases, would be closer to the audience in the bleachers than they would be if they was in the outfield. It's hard to explain. If you're familiar with Carter Park, I use it as an example. And right behind Carter Park is the youth field, and right behind the parking lot, right in front of the parking lot, is a set of bleachers that face the right, the first base side. Now, if I walked out, of course, I probably wouldn't nobody do it, but if someone did, they could actually walk out, stand in the parking lot, smoke a cigarette, and actually blow the smoke back, while they're smoking, the wind could blow the smoke right back on people because they're closer from here to that wall.
Mr. McKee, is the parking lot a part of the park?
I would say it is, but once again, I think Mr. Lawrence is going to say that's definition.
I would say that it is, if it's parking for the park, you know, if it's contiguous.
It's public parking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that means that they can't smoke in the parking lot?
In the park, in the parking lot.
I think the way, the way this question gets resolved, if you had an area, you've got to say where it is versus, in other words, you have to say that spot right there so that there is no guesswork. And if you did that, it may be to task, you know, someone with the obligation of identifying that place that this body would want to serve that purpose. Because I don't know if you could put in the ordinance, but you got to designate some monuments, some landmarks in the park to say, over there, you know, that's where you can do this, if you did that.
Now, how many parks we have? We have Dotson, Carter, East Madison, Jackson, Forest Park.
Raff George.
Raff George Park.
We have nine parks.
We've got nine parks. How do you make, should this council so desire to have a designated area somewhere in the proximity, how do you make that generic enough that it will be fitting? Or do you have to specify for all nine parks? Or, you know, and this council may wish to vote on this ordinance as presented, just ban it altogether?
You know, that, one of the answers to that, Mayor, could be that the ordinance could say that you are given the authority to task someone with the city to say where that one area will be. That's one way to do it. Other than that, again, you've got to be, you've got to say with precision where that is in all nine locations. So, you know, you can, you can give someone the discretion to determine where that spot is, or you have to say exactly where that spot is.
All right, council members, I trust that you're being armed with enough information to take under consideration your pledge. to take under consideration your pledge. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. McKee. At this time, I will entertain a motion on Ordinance 114202, to prohibit the use of tobacco products in the public parks of the City of Bastrop by amending the appropriate sections of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bastrop and repeal all other sections of the Code of Ordinances that are inconsistent with said prohibition and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Mayor, I make a motion for Ordinance 114202.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I believe that covers, that's the last item on the agenda. Ms. Goldman, have we covered everything? Mr. Lawrence, can you think of anything else we need to do?
I think that's pretty much it.
All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Properly moved. And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.